Main meeting, I will call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. I am Holly Derlo Babcock. We have Kate Stoll here as a board member, Beth Williams is a board member, Principal Tim Grison is over there. Sam is our student council rep. We have Andy Corey, our superintendent, Gina Burks Gog, our assistant superintendent, Bob Thompson, our second assistant superintendent, or same assistant superintendent. Krista Whalen and Cindy Venconan are also present as our other board members. We are missing, with excused absence, Liz Brown. And Tom Solon will be joining us via the phone at some point. So, at this point, I'd like to, I need a motion that we go into, that the board by roll call go into non-public session pursuant to RSA 91- A colon 3, Part 2, Letter A, the dismissal of promotion and/or compensation of any public employee. Is it just, and reputation as well, right? And Part C as well.
So moved, second.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Beth. I need a roll call vote on this, so Beth, I'll start with you.
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
Holly, aye.
Krista, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Okay, so that is, the ayes have that. So we are now in non-public as of, I don't have.
Six oh one.
Oh, there it goes, six oh one, 6:01 PM.
Can you show the phone?
We came out of non-public at 6:21, it's 6:25 now. So, at this point, we're back. I'd like to appoint a process observer, someone will raise their hand. Krista, you can do it right. Are you sure you're okay to write? Okay. All right, so Krista's our appointed process observer. We do have a very small, I only have one little agenda adjustment, do you have any others?
I do.
Okay, so Andy, you go first.
Okay. During deliberations, I'm going to request the, from the board permission to hire. We're heading into a very difficult hiring market, and we have a number of interviews and things that are just wrapping up, that will be able to be hired in the next week. And we're just concerned because some of the positions, and I'll use math and science as examples, the candidates that we have in front of us will be applying multiple districts, so we'd just like to execute that. And I know that Tim and Rick have done a great job, so that we would add during deliberations. Also, we just need to, we're going to be discussing the committee assignments for the compensation committee that the, at the SAU level, the health insurance committee at the SAU level, and the rental lease committee at the SAU level. And I didn't know if, if the board chair wanted to assign those tonight, then vote on them, or just talk about them tonight and vote next month, either one works, but I just wanted to make sure that we mentioned it. And then, under deliber, discussion, Gina is just going to touch base on a policy update regarding the New Hampshire School Boards Association and looking at the policy books that we had talked about.
Okay, great, thank you very much. If there's no opposition to those, we'll move forward with those agenda documents. Everybody good with that? Excellent. Okay, so, nominations, resignations, and correspondence, that's you.
Yep, I have two resignations. Dear Mr. Barnes, I am writing this letter to formally notify you that after completing my current annual contract, I will resigning from my position as a teacher at Hollis Brookline High School, effective at the end of the final contract of day June 30th. I am grateful for the opportunity, have enjoyed working with the school community, especially all the wonderful students. I look forward to continuing to put forth my best effort for them through the end of the year. Again, thank you for the opportunity and your ongoing support, and that is from Brian Farnell, chemistry teacher.
Okay, so, I need a motion to accept the resignation of Brian Farnell.
So moved.
From Beth.
Second.
And second by Kate. Tom isn't on, right?
No, he has called yet.
So all those in favor? Was there a discussion on that, or no?
I just had a question, but it could be asked.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Has that position been posted?
Yes, it was posted.
Anticipated, okay. All those in favor? Okay, that's six zero.
The second one, I am writing this letter to formally request to resign from my special education position at Hollis Brookline High School, effective June 30th, 2021. I have been offered a position in the school district much closer to my residence, and I would like to accept that offer. And that is from Rebecca Bagtaz. Rebecca has been upfront telling us that she has been looking closer to home because of her family situation, and I support this request to allow her to move on. She's done a good service for us while she's been here, but I do understand, we do see a commute can be a big benefit for folks.
Sure. Okay, so I need a motion to accept the resignation of Rebecca Bagtaz from the Hollis Brookline High School.
So moved.
Moved by Beth, seconded by?
Second.
Krista? I got Beth and Krista. Is there any comments? We thank her for her service, and all those in favor? That's six zero zero.
And that's it for nominations, resignations, and correspondence.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, at this point, we need to approve some minutes. We have the minutes of the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board Organizational Meeting on April 14th, 2021. I'm going to take my mask off, just because it's a lot of reading. I need, the following amendments have been offered, page four, line 29, insert "of" before resignation, and page eight, line 34, insert "to" before "host." I need a motion to accept.
So moved.
Beth, moved by Beth, I need a second.
Second.
Kate is seconding. Are there any other comments, questions? Okay. All those in favor? And that's six zero zero. I also need to look at the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board NonPublic Minutes of April 14th, 2021, I need a motion to accept as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Beth, seconded by?
Second.
Kate. Again, any comments? All those in favor? Six zero zero. Okay. That was quick. Now, at this point, I'd like to open the floor for public input, seeing none. I will make a public statement, though, that since we are running ahead of schedule, if public are to enter, we can take a quick break and allow them to speak, because I don't want to go off at the 6:50. But I am going to open the floor and close the floor. Great. I can reopen it later. And moving on to our principal and athletic reports and student council report, which is not on here, it's part of the principal reports, but we will, please do not let me forget Sam, that you will be, is it Sam? Samantha? Sam?
Why don't we start with Sam?
That sounds great. Sam, why don't we start with you?
Okay, thank you.
And thank you very much for submitting a written report.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
So Teacher Appreciation Week went really smoothy. Each class found their own unique way to thank teachers and staff for all the work that they've done this past year, and based on responses from everyone, it was really appreciated. We were also fortunate enough to have Mr. Grison join us for a meeting, and he got to know our council, and he's going to be working with next year, which we all really appreciated. We're now still working in our different policy groups, addressing the student council constitution, our election processes, and the job description rules for each member of council. When we looked into it, the constitution hadn't been reviewed since 2017, so we're mainly just trying to regroup and everything before going into next year and make some much-needed updates and everything to policies. And other than that, the seniors are in their homestretch now, they're getting excited for prom, which is this Friday, and graduation, which they put together, and we're really proud of how they've handled everything throughout this year, and we're excited to send them off.
Thank you, thanks so much. Does anyone have any questions for Sam?
No, thank you.
Thanks so much. We're going to move on to the principals' report, Sam, and Mr. Grison's going to be going over how, you know, how we construct the, how he and the team constructs the master schedule, so you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to stay, but you might actually have some ideas or input into some of this, so, but please feel free to go or stay. So I'm opening now it up to you, Tim.
All right, so you want to go over Brian's as well?
Yep.
Yeah, you're in charge of all of the administrative reports.
I got it all, I got it all. All right, so Brian included in his report, the spring season is off to a good start. Baseball, tennis, lacrosse teams started off the year unbeaten, girls lacrosse, boys volleyball and softball teams, each also competing with just a couple losses at this point. Boys tennis team and track team remain competitive as well, and have tournaments coming up next week, 24th. Unified track team also has a great season so far, and they're hosting an intrasquad meet on Monday, looks like it was just, just this past Monday. Let's see, Mr. Wolet was named Coach of the Year for swimming, and ice hockey coach, Mr. Sanborn, named Coach of the Year in the local Telegraph paper as well. Let's see, the 101 athletes taking part in HBMS intramurals this spring. We just recently announced that all of our teams will be taking part in an interscholastic scrimmage with Milford, both home and away meets, or home and away games. Our track team will have an intrasquad track meet here, which actually I just saw an email about, we're going to be running the show here ourselves, so we'll have staff volunteers timing the events and whatnot, so that should be good. That's all next week, happening next week. It looks like the spring participation numbers are a little bit down. I talked to Brian a little bit about this, he attributes it to potentially, you know, all the sports that are offered in the spring do have alternative options, you know, private club sports, rec sports are all running as well, and so some of the JV options that didn't have interscholastic competition, he thought maybe impacted some of the numbers there. But overall, participation numbers look pretty good. And the scholar athletes, he wanted me to mention, we had 28 NHIA double A scholar athletes announced for this current school year. These are students who have maintained a B-plus or better, have participated in community service, and have played two or more sports in their senior year. So congratulations to all those athletes as well.
Great, I can see here, this is not, I don't know if you can answer this, that Ally and Brian are the boys' middle school lacrosse coaches.
They are, yes, recent hires.
But I thought Ally was also the girls' JV lacrosse coach at the high school?
Yes.
So that's a lot.
Yeah, they stagger, yeah, they stagger their practices, so they make it work.
Okay, so you're making that work, so that's great.
Yep.
And that does explain, the fact that there's no real competitive JV option does explain why some of the numbers are going to be lower.
Some of the numbers, yep.
That makes sense, thank you for that report, Mr. Grison.
So then, I was thinking, I'll do my middle school report, and then I'll do the high school report, followed by the enrollment averages at work.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Do your middle school report, and then before you start, before you put on the hat of the high school, I just want to say one thing, so go ahead.
Sure, sure. So, we had a number of students, a number of middle school students have their artwork nominated to be displayed at the Virtual Youth Arts Exhibition in, was that Milford? It was at the drive-in movie theater. There were, it was like a video display of all the art pieces before one of their feature films, just this past week, so that was an honor for them to be recognized there. We conducted our statewide assessments this past, not this week, last week we finished our seventh graders, and then we did the eighth graders before vacation. That included inviting in remote learners, who had been remote all year, maintaining all of our standard COVID protocols, social distance in classrooms with a computer-based test, and it went off, it went off really well. So, we have, you know, some, some makeup tests still scheduled, but overall, the SAS tests were conducted successfully, and those results will be posted at some point. Staffing updates, we are currently in the interview process for an eighth grade science teacher, a Spanish teacher, a school nurse, and a computer ed teacher, and those, all those committees are underway in interviewing and at different points along the process, but nearing the completion of sending finalists, if they're not already there, to the SAU. We do also have our projected enrollment numbers for next year. Our, our eighth grade, current eighth grade class of 214 will be moving on up to the high school, and replacing them will be a 191 incoming seventh graders. So, our total enrollment numbers will go from about 383 to 360 next year, if we are not quite as far along the process of scheduling as the high school is, and that's by design, we're right about where we want it to be at this point. We are almost done with course requests from parents, we're tracking down a couple still for some of the elective courses, like world language and whatnot, and we should be nearing the phase at which the high school's at right now in the coming weeks, so we'll have some more typical comparative numbers like the high school, and I'd say by the June meeting, to have, you know, averages across the board. But until we get all those enrollments in, we're still just looking ballparks right now. But overall, you know, we'll be offering the same selection for students, so those numbers will look very comparable to what we had this year, and maybe slightly, slightly lower. We are partnering with the high school in the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard. On May 25th, they are offering a STEM, what they call a STEM pop-up event.
Oh, cool.
This is going to be outside, there are 10 different tents that are demonstrations of different trades that are, that take place at the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard for our students to observe. I believe the high school is offering it to their sophomores, and we're walking up with our, our eighth graders. So for, throughout the course of the day, we'll be shuff, kind of shuffling kids up and back to take part in that. And we are also in the process of scheduling an end-of-year celebration bonanza. We got a lot of fun activities planned, obviously all with social distancing and COVID protocols in place. That will include our end-of-year academic awards, both for the seventh and eighth. We've got some fun, kind of field day type activities, that'll take place outside, and we also have some assembly-type activities with kind of an SCL-type feel for an end-of-year celebration of all the accomplishments that have taken place this year. So, that's scheduled for June 4th, with a rain date of June 11th. And that's it for the middle school.
Great, thank you. So anyone have any questions?
Do we, do we, what is the average number of kids, do you think, can you estimate, that come in over the summer?
I mean, it's a give and take, I think we were usually on the, yeah, people will transfer out and transfer in. I would say, Bob, and you can, you know, chime in here, I think last year, I think we were probably plus 12 to 15, as far as, you know, we, the net gain, at the end of the day. But kids, you know, come and go, but I'd say typically, you know, upwards of 15.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, 15 to 20, depending on the year.
Depending on the, yep.
And I would also add that we have a number of families who've opted to homeschool this year, that have not, you know, communicated with us one way or the other. They have the option to continue with that, but some of them might choose to return. So we will probably see numbers that fluctuate quite a bit.
Okay, thank you. Great, those were my questions, too. I'm really psyched to hear about the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, and also having something kind of special.
Yep.
Because, you know, we know that our eighth graders didn't last year or this year, haven't been able to have some of those things that were nice traditions, so that's great. And then, my other thing goes back to the athletic report, I just want to give a shout out to Bobby O and to Joel Sanborn, for both of them, because they were named Coach of the Year, and to congratulate all of the winter and fall athletes, because I don't think we did that. If, if this is, in terms of the course requests and the scheduling issues, like, so the policy lays out that we need projected numbers in May, but we can go back to the policy committee and maybe rearrange those dates and that timeframe to give the middle school principal opportunity? Because if this is really too tight for the middle school principal, then we need to change the policy so that we can make it so that it's, it's a doable thing. So maybe we need to change that to, like, by June instead of in May.
Yeah, I think that, I think that would open up that conversation. At this point, you know, last year with, with COVID, we were in a different place when that policy was written into action, and, you know, with regards to how the high school takes their course requests, and we follow suit after them, you know, we are kind of on pace with where I would anticipate future years being.
Okay, that's the thing. And then, finally, I do know that you have all of the administrative hats on right now, the building principal hats on right now, but I do want to, for the public, just, and I think we will recognize more when Ricky is here next month, but I do want to make a comment that he was named New Hampshire Principal of the Year.
Yes, he was.
Which is a huge, huge thing for him, and we want to congratulate him. What did you say?
Tough act to follow.
Tough act to follow, yes.
Yep.
So we want to congratulate him in public, and we will see him next month and make sure we congratulate him.
We expect the same.
So, yes, yes, there you go, Tim. Welcome to, now put on that principals' hat, made a high school principals' hat, yep.
So Mr. Barnes and I did chat about his report here, and he asked me to highlight a couple of things. One in particular here, the national merit finalists of 1.5 million entrants, about 50,000 with the highest PSAT scores are recognized by the scholarship program. In September, these high scores are notified through their schools that they qualified. We are pleased to announce that Kai, I believe it's pronounced Jimeno, in class 21, has been named finalist in a very elite pool of around 15,000 students from original, 1.5 million. So obviously, an incredible honor for Kai, congratulations, his commitment to excellence in the classroom. Mr. Barnes asked me to just kind of go over a couple of the upcoming end-of-year events. The first one is this coming weekend, the 21st prom is going to be taking place at Beaver Brook. This is for students and staff, you know, who are working the event only, it's not for, they're not going to be able to manage anything beyond just the students and, and the staff who are volunteering there to work. And the rain date is the 22nd. Class Day Awards, that is scheduled for June 9th, that is during a regular school day. Again, that will be specifically for students and staff. And then, there will be a senior awards night that's going to take place on the lacrosse field on June 9th, that same day, and that will be open to parents as the field will be set up for graduation. So it will be something similar with, I believe you said, four guests per, per senior for, for parents to attend. And then graduation is scheduled for June 12th, and that's 10:00 AM, with a rain date of the following day, on the 13th.
That's great, congratulations to Kai, that's huge, so.
Yeah, very impressive.
Any comments on Rick's report? Okay, Tim, I think that leads you with the construction of the master schedule update.
Okay.
Do you want to pass it out to you?
Sure.
He just texted, he said he wasn't in place to call, wondering whether it's worth calling, so I just told him we're about to start talking about master schedules, it's up to him, so I'm waiting for his answer.
Yeah, I hate, like, you can't make that decision.
Thank you.
Is it worth calling? I don't know, what is it exactly? Worth calling?
You could have a night off, it would be good.
Yeah, he can take the night off, it's fine, like, it's not like he has to call, it's just, we totally appreciate it. Okay, so I think I have it in the spreadsheet, too.
This is our favorite meeting.
No, 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 this isn't, this is a, this is projected, then.
The meeting in October is your favorite meeting, when it's like the actual numbers.
This is a close second.
This is just, this is our, this is.
This is the, this is the warm-up to the actual.
This is the warm-up, so that that October meeting goes a little bit different.
So, in collaboration with high school administration and department chairs, we've been able to put together what we anticipate, the projections for average enrollment numbers across all sections of all courses throughout the building. So, my plan tonight was just to kind of walk through some of the thought process that went into where we landed here, before any of this goes into Power School, and we go through the process of the actual scheduling, the ad drop period that takes place throughout the summer, and then into the school year, just so when we land, where we land in a typical year, you'll have had some background knowledge and awareness of where this, this process starts. All right, so, I'm going to go through the order in which they're on your spreadsheet there. So the first, the first department there is the engineering department. Currently, we have Mr. Foto teaching four engineering courses, and the engineering technologies, and then the three Project Lead the Way courses. We've seen, the high school's seen steady growth in the program since Mr. Foto has taken over the program, and the goal moving forward will be to add an additional Project Lead the Way engineering course. I've had a little correspondence with, with Mr. Foto in recent days about what that might look like, but kind of offering a wider range of Project Lead the Way courses for, you know, potentially either an entry level, or maybe a capstone course for students particularly interested in that field. Devin is currently teaching one math section, so there would be potential need to increase current .83 position in math, if Devin were to move to a full-time engineering, so just kind of something down the road. English department, obviously, a lot of offerings in English. I'm just going to highlight, if you guys can look at the Journalism 1 and 2, you may note that the Journalism 2 is running at a very low enrollment number. The way that's going to work is Journalism 1 will run in a Semester 1, and then Journalism 1 and 2 will be combined into one section as a Semester 2 course, so it'll be a combination in the second semester. And oftentimes, what you see is students won't sign up for Journalism 2, because the Journalism 1 is a prerequisite, so you'll see that added mid-year. But either way, Journalism 1 and Journalism 2 students will be in the same section, so those numbers might, at the first glance, look a little eye-opening, but in actuality, those will be right on par with, with the court, with the recommendations from the policy. College comp, if you look at the college comp numbers, there were 25 requests. The, the goal there is to run two sections, those will be smaller numbers. We did look at running, you know, one singular section of 25. This is a course that is offered for college credit, so offering two sections prevents anyone from not getting into the course, which could potentially be, you know, our community college-bound students needing that course for credit, so we wanted to make sure that we provided that opportunity for, for those individuals to, to get what is a really great opportunity for them at the high school level, earning college credit. So, we opted to split that section, so it will run in a, in a lower enrollment number. That class is typically capped at 20, because of the large amount of writing that takes place in it, so it would essentially be boxing kids out from getting that class if we were to run a one, only one singular section. So, we felt like that would make sense to split that and, and offer two sections, allowing all those who, who requested it to get it. All right, and I know you'll probably have questions as we go on, but I'll go through, and then, I guess we can go back if, if you have questions afterwards, so.
Can I just interrupt you once again?
Yes, sure.
Tom Solon has joined us on the phone.
Yep.
And so, I'd like for him to just acknowledge that he's able to hear us, that he's, if he's with anybody, who he's with, and what's the other question?
And why he can't be here.
And why he can't be here, thank you. Tom?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am out of state currently, in personal business. I am alone at the moment. I can hear most of you, I could hear Tim well.
Okay, I'll talk louder then, since we're the only two.
No, I can, I can hear you now, I just don't know where the phone is relative to conversation, so it's just hard to do it in the distance.
We put the phone in the middle. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, so we'll, all votes will be roll call, while Tom is on the phone. Thank you, Tim, sorry.
So, if you look at the next section of courses there, that's our facts, our Family Consumer Science offerings, those are what we call free choice electives. Those numbers look very healthy, we do have students sign up for those, and we do prioritize upperclassmen for getting those. They do run at our max sections typically, we cap them, so if you look at class sizes, we're not going to run a section of 48 and a half students in, in Foods 2. Those are often, you know, freshmen who will have the opportunity to take that class at some point in their four years. So those, those numbers all look healthy. I know Candice, Mrs. Hancock has, you know, done a really nice job, you know, recruiting and offering some, some, some good courses across the board, and those look like, some newer courses, fashion and retail merchandising, looks like a newer one I am unfamiliar with, was not there when I was there, so it sounds like she's done a really nice job growing that program there. Those numbers all look healthy. If we flip to the next one, the math, going to walk through a couple of decisions that were made to land us where we are, overall. Overall, our numbers fall in range with where we want. We have a couple of things that I just want to highlight. If you look at the Accelerated Algebra II numbers there, those numbers are upwards of 24 on average. There's 48 student requests total. We're going to run two sections of that. We did reduce the Accelerated Algebra II down to two sections so that our standard Algebra II sections had a better teacher-student ratio, with those students typically requiring more teacher support. So if you look down at the Algebra II, we increased that to six sections from five, and that put us right around 18.2 students per section. So we feel like that number of 18 in a standard-level algebra class will provide the opportunity for a better teacher-student ratio, and oftentimes, you know, some more direct instruction, individualized instruction for students who may need it at that level where the accelerated class at 24. Ideally, those students are a little bit more self-sufficient in their mathematics. So, and then in a similar vein, the Running Start Algebra II, that we did put, let me find my number here, 18. So those sections will run at 18. And just something I wanted to cover, the Running Start Algebra II is often a natural progression for students who come from the Algebra 1A, freshman year Algebra 1B, sophomore year, and general geometry their junior year, and those numbers are typically capped at around 15. So we felt like an 18 for what is typically a junior-senior class was a healthy number and a good targeted number for that particular course. And that was it for my notes for math. The next page is PE and Wellness. And if you are not familiar, we are, we currently have a 1.0 position open in PE as well as a .6 position in PE. And those numbers that you see there for class size, for the PE classes, that's with a 1.6, filling a 1.6 position. So obviously, very healthy numbers. Our current course requests would support a .4 increase to that current .6 position that's currently open. Our section sizes of 39, 45, and 47. Again, we won't run them at that size. We will, you know, prioritize our upperclassmen who have signed up for those elective courses. But it is nice to see that, you know, students are still interested in taking, you know, these healthy options during the school day, despite, you know, alternative options for credit. I think that there's a lot to be said about offering these types of courses for students in a regular school day for a lot of different reasons. So we have those positions open right now. Our 1.0 and our .6 positions are currently open and we're conducting interviews for those. So, and then Maria, Ms. St. Pierre has her wellness classes, which in a similar nature to what happens at the middle school, you know, the number of students is divided by those 10 sections, and you're left with what you have there with about 21 kids per section in the wellness, freshman wellness classes. All right. Moving on from PE to Science. So I'd like to just bring your attention to the AP Physics II number, which is a lower enrollment. We have 13 students who signed up for this AP Physics II class. This is a singleton course. If we did not offer it, there aren't other options within the building, so it's not as if we, you know, split two sections of, you know, or one section down into two. We want to offer this class for students who are particularly, you know, particularly interested in this field. So we elected to run it at this number of 13. Conversely, our AP Environmental Science classes, so this current year, we had 35 students sign up for this, and we ran two sections at about 17 and 1/2, and we saw an increase of 10 students. Seeing an increase in course requests for this particular course, it's a more accessible option for students seeking an AP Science course, so we did increase it, increase one section here. So we'll run three sections of that at about 15 kids per section, 15 students per section. And our Honors, Anatomy, and Physiology, I want to draw your attention to that. We had a total of 29 requests. The decision was made to split that down to two. If we reduced it to one section, it would again create a similar circumstance where we would be boxing out about five students from getting this as an option, with science courses being capped at 24. So we elected to split that and run two sections of Honors, Anatomy, and Physiology at about 14 and 1/2 students per section. So that was Science. And next department was Social Studies. If you look at our AP Psychology classes, our sections there, you'll note that they are at about 24 students per section, which is, it's a fairly healthy number. It's a little larger than what we had this year, which this year was about 21.8, so 22 kids. But we saw an increase in requests, and we elected to kind of stay at four sections, which allowed us to increase the number of freshman US History classes. So the US History, which is the second to last one there, we increased that to 11 sections. We felt that for this heterogenously grouped course, we thought that a number of 19.3 with 11 sections, 19.3 kids per section, was a more beneficial number for the masses. For every kid who takes that freshman, that required course, which is again heterogenously grouped, we thought that we should focus on decreasing those teacher-student ratios in that section, in those sections, as opposed to the AP course, AP Psych course. So that decision was made for that, and that was the outcome. If you flip to the Arts section there, which has both visual and performing, I think you have it on the same page. Am I looking at, my report looks different.
It's on the same page.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
You do have the visual separated from, in the order, but it's basically in the same area.
Okay, so if you could look down to the Performing Arts section.
Sure.
I'm going to speak to Concert Band. So Concert Band, EOD, that's an every-other-day class, so that alternates depending on the student with either a study hall or potentially just band. So you have, Concert Band will be run with two sections of 13 instead of one section of 26. With our current COVID guidelines around performing arts and music, we didn't want to put ourselves in a situation where with 26 students, we couldn't perform pieces all in one ensemble. So we did split it, knowing that that number of 13 was kind of lower than the target, and in all honesty, in speaking with the high school, it's not actually ideal. I think the section of 26 would be preferred, but with not exactly knowing where COVID guidelines will lie with the instruments, the decision to land at 13 was made. So we felt that that was the best with what we know about where we'll be next year. Improv II, those numbers are, let's see where's improv? So Improv II, those numbers are significantly low. However, past history has shown Improv II will typically fill in after schedules run. Improv I is a prerequisite, and you need that in order to sign up for, you need that in order to sign up for Improv II, and Acting II is not running. So what we'll likely see is that number, Improv II, will increase when the scheduling takes place. So you won't see it here in the requests, but you will see it when schedule run after students get their schedules. That's typically where that particular student with that profile will land. Improv is also a popular secondary choice for students when first-choice electives are not available, so those numbers typically fill through the Guidance Department. Guitar II will typically fill in after schedules run as well. In a similar vein, Guitar I is a prerequisite in order to sign up for Guitar II. So those are running, those have run at this point in the scheduling process in the past with similar enrollment numbers, and those have filled. Almost there. AP Studio Art, so in the Visual Arts section, AP Studio Art is running with six students, but is embedded into Drawing 1 and Drawing 2. So those section numbers, although at first glance appear like there's six students in a class, that's actually going to be 18 or 19 kids in each of those sections. And our last department is our World Language Department, and we opted to run two sections of Latin II with 14 students per section. This is almost a full retention of the current juniors who are taking Latin I. So we looked at the students who are currently taking Latin I, and the goal is obviously to retain them for their senior year, that second year of the course, and an increase in enrollments from this year's Latin II. So in Mr. McFarland, who is, you know, the goal is to build that program up. In support of that, we thought that offering a second section of Latin II would help that cause. So the goal there is to continue to see growth in that Latin program. The .2 French position, you may recall, was added last year, actually was a .4, .2 down here at the middle school, .2 up at the high school. The idea being that cohort of students at the middle school, offering three sections of 7th grade and three sections of 8th grade each year, prevents that every-other-year scenario where the French 5 has a really, really low enrollment number. We're not quite there yet, but that .2 French position will be utilizing within the World Language Department by adding another section of Spanish 1. And if you look at the Spanish 1 numbers right now, we are targeting, let's see, four sections. If we only ran three sections of Spanish 1 and one section of French 1, all of our entry-level language courses would be at capacity to start the year, and that's really not a great place to be in. Adding a section of French 1 was considered, but that would create two really small sections at 13 apiece, instead of adding, what we did was add a section of Spanish 1, so we went from three to four, and that, the average out from three to four is a much more palatable 18.3. And Spanish is also a more common choice for any potential freshman who might move into the district, and that's, you know, just kind of an anecdotal note that it's a more popular choice for students entering a world language. So we felt like taking that .2 and putting it in Spanish made more sense. So we have an additional section of Spanish 1 and a very, a very healthy 18.3 students per section there, with the anticipation of, you know, students needing that entry-level course. If we didn't do that, there would essentially be no seats available for anyone in either. So we opted that. And lastly, AP French will run with, we are in that, we are in that every-other-year situation, one section of eight students for AP French. This cohort of students is an example of a year where there were only two sections of 7th grade Spanish that, it's still an every-other-year thing. So Jess down here at the middle school taught six sections this year, so three of 7th and three of 8th, so that will follow suit in the coming years up at the high school.
Great. Take a sip. Thank you, Tim. That was a lot. Thank you so much. I'm going to let, does anyone have any questions? Tom, will you, since you're on the phone?
I have questions, but it's maybe easier for people there to start off and see if it gets covered.
Okay. Anyone else have questions?
I just wanted to clarify really quick. For example, so somebody electives, like human relations.
Mm-hmm.
You've got 35 requests, and there will only be one section. It says class size 35, but I'm assuming if not, you're going to.
Correct, yeah.
Run it 20.
Yeah, it'll run at 22. We'll prioritize upperclassmen.
Yep.
Those are offered to students. That particular one, I think it might be sophomores to seniors. I don't think freshmen can sign up. I could be mistaken on it. Don't quote me on that one. But yeah, we do prioritize seniors, so at some point over the course of the four years, students will have the opportunity to take that.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Anyone else have questions?
I was just trying to go back and find my, no, okay, I'll go back.
So I have some questions. I'll do mine, and then I'll speak twice if I have to. So you mentioned with gym that you've got, you know, we've got 1.6 teachers.
Yep.
And you feel like, of course, there are enough requests for two full-time teachers? Is that what you're saying?
I think the numbers here definitely show healthy request numbers. I know this current year with the pandemic, they were a little handcuffed with offering different things, but, you know, my comment was, it was nice to see that students are still looking for these as options. So those high numbers right there, that's at a 1.6. So that number of 45 kids in a section, that's with only a .6 in that role.
So my question is, we have an alternative credit system for students who, you know, do a sport so that they don't have to take gym, so some of them might be electing to take a gym as well. But are we sure, like, I'm sure you do this, or they do this, that every student who needs a gym for requirement, because not everyone plays a sport, will be able to take gym for requirement?
Yep. So the freshman wellness fitness class captures .5 of the one-credit requirement by the state.
Right.
Then the wellness is the .5 health. So after their freshman year, they need one semester, just half a year.
Right.
So any one of those electives. So similar to what Kate was asking about before, yes, those students would be prioritized to get one of those classes so that you're not looking at a situation in senior year that they don't have the .5 PE credit.
But like, the seniors, where we're trying to prioritize seniors with electives, with this situation, this was like a common thing to take your sophomore year, like you took your gym your sophomore year.
There used to be a sophomore PE class.
Like it was your sophomore PE.
Yep.
So is the priority obviously to get seniors in who need the requirements, but also to meet, like, the needs of our kids? Like, how carefully do you look at that?
I think seniors needing a .5 PE credit would be prioritized.
Right, well, then, okay.
Yep.
I just want to make sure that every student who has to take required gym gets to take required.
Yep.
You understand what I'm saying?
I do.
Because it's not just seniors, it's like all the kids who just need it, like.
Yep.
Right, okay.
And I would just comment that before these are released, the counselors are instructed to review all of their senior schedules to see what they.
Yeah, the credit check is something that's.
Right, okay.
That's helpful. That's really helpful information. The other comment is not for you, but for the board, I feel like our social studies numbers are always a little on the high side in terms of like class sizes. Like AP Psych is a little tight, and I think that was the right decision to make the, to lower those US History classes down, you know, by adding a section of history, then you have to take a section away from AP Psych, but that's tight. AP US History is at 24, which means that any move-ins or people to transfer, that's high, on the high side. Legal Studies with two sections, which is an elective, is 23. Sociology can't run all of, you know, you're going to have to drop some kids from sociology. So this isn't really, you can't make any decisions. I mean, this is, but it just, it seems like it's a department that, you know, as we look towards staffing, we could make some considerations for that, and maybe it's just because I'm a fan of history and humanities. I feel like it's important. And then I'm just always going to make a case for making sure that we continue to support AP Studio Art, because many of our students who are taking that, that is directly related to what they'll be doing in college. So that's good that it's mixed in, but it also would be great if it was six or eight students in a studio, being able to dig in without those drawing students. I know we can't do it that way, but.
Yep.
You know, that kind of time to develop is really important. Okay, that's just my comments and questions. Anyone else? Anyone else? Nobody else? Mr. Solon?
Well, I was going to, I was going to mention the social studies as well, because I think that, I mean, especially the sociology one, I mean, that's not a one semester. So that's really high. And I do think AP Psych is really high, because those classes have a lot of writing and they do videos. I mean, there's a lot, that's a lot.
There's a lot of grading.
That's a lot on a teacher in that, in that section.
So those sociology numbers, again, like you said, there's not a ton of decision there. What we did actually is those civics, we actually increased the civics second semester from four to five, and that's why that sociology number is high, because you rob one to pay for the other, so.
But you won't run them at 30, run them at 25. So 10 students will be able to take sociology, which is, I mean, it's elective, so they'll choose something different, and that's fine, but it's, and that's where the, you know, where the give and take comes. But I'm just saying, like, as we look at trends, which is what this process should be for the board to be able to see the trends of like, you know, so when someone comes to us and says, I really think we need a social studies teacher, we, we have this, this conversation in May, so. I was just pointing out, trying, trying to point your out. Any other questions, Liz? I see you looking like you want to ask a question.
Well, I'm just trying to figure, I mean, we're just, are, maybe it's just a cycle thing for French, but that seems to be getting smaller and smaller, especially when you compare it to this year's numbers.
You talking about the capstone?
No, the French.
Yeah, the AP French.
AP French is pretty small, but you've, you've got, I mean, French IV is at 17. I mean, you've got more kids in honors French IV. I don't know, it just seems to me like the capstone is pretty small.
Yep, so.
Is that an option for them to take on V-Lax?
French V.
AP French?
AP French?
We do see a significant, like, I don't know what, what the numbers were, but we do see a drop from honors French to AP French every year, so. Do you have a question, or do, yeah, you just come. Anyone else? Well, Tim, I want to thank you. I've asked three times. Tom?
I thought you were, I was just waiting to.
Okay.
Get that cleaned up. Tim, thank, thank you very much for putting this together and, and the presentation got to do to us in a very manageable form. At what point do the realities of scheduling kick in so that you know how close you are to balancing sections?
I, you know, obviously, the end product that is presented to the board in October is, is the final product, because that includes, once school starts and students are able to come in for the add drop, I won't use the word significant, but there are changes to the schedule that take place, and that, those numbers where you might have, let's say, a first or a seventh period course that, you know, started off, you know, close to a, to an average enrollment, and let's say that average enrollment was already a lower number at, let's say, 14, and you have, you know, three seniors who say, I'm going to sleep in, and I'm going to opt not to take this advanced class, or I'm going to go do a V-Lax class instead, or I'm going to do an ELO instead, or any one of those options, and all of a sudden you're looking at a number of 11, and that's going to, that's going to draw attention when originally the number was 14 and a half, and that number made a lot of sense, because if it wasn't 14 and a half, it would have been 28, and that doesn't work. So I would say, you know, by the end of school, beginning of July, the scheduling process will be in place, but then I, I can't say for, you know, that there wouldn't be additional changes once the school year gets underway and schedules get released. When schedules get released in the, in the summer, I think students will also say, for different reasons, you know, that, that they want to make course request changes, and they'll meet with the guidance counselors. School counselors do have some contracted days during the summer that they meet with students regularly, make schedule changes for a number of different, different reasons. So we would.
I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, if you show a situation where you've got, for example, 30 requests, and you decide to run two sections with an average of 15 each, but at some point with scheduling, the only way that those 30 kids can get that class is to put 22 in one section and eight in another, what happens?
So there are literally thousands of schedules that get run through Power School, get run through the process to avoid that sort of imbalance. I think what you'll see is, again, I think with the best of intentions, intention staying as close to that middle number as possible and scheduling things based on past experience at the appropriate times during the day, opposite other similar classes that might be taken by, you know, that college-bound track student who needs this class and that class. So there's a lot that goes into avoiding that situation, at least out of the gates when the schedule does get created by Power School. It's the human element that happens after that, that I think you'll see some numbers move away from that median more so than through the scheduling process. I do think that they do a tremendous job of getting close to that number, be it plus a couple or minus a couple, and then from there, if there's an additional changes, that's when you get, you know, you get some of those numbers that stick out. Does that make sense, Tom?
It makes sense. I guess the question, I haven't been through this process in a long time. For student requests, do they request a lot more than they can take so that, so that you've got first, second, and third kind of choices to do that, for Power School to do that balancing?
First, second, and third, like, choice electives? Is that what the question was?
Well, just in, in general, if, if someone is in a, in a track where in their year they're supposed to have a certain math class, and the other things that they want to take overlap, I don't see how even Power School can, can overcome that. So if you are in a situation where, after running through Power School, there is an imbalance, how do you, how do you treat a situation where there is an imbalance that makes for a undesirably low section? Do you just, just live with it, or do you reapply?
Yeah, there are, like I said, yeah, there are lots of reapplications of the schedule to try and make it work. We have a, a list of conflicts that, that do come up, and that, and it's, it's quite impressive, the number, how, how low it actually is when you look at 850 students or, or thereabouts, the number of students who do have conflicts to, to try and getting a course, try to get them a course that they, that they requested and can't because of, and typically it's, you know, it's the, those higher-end elective courses, that there's singleton courses, and you, you know, you have more than seven AP classes that we offer in the building, so you can't take every AP course possible, because it's going to overlap at some point with another AP course in, in a given period. So the number of conflicts that take place is actually pretty low. Again, they do a tremendous job minimizing that. As far as the impact that that has on the balancing of schedule, I do think, again, I go back, I, I think that the schedule comes pretty close to where we aimed, you know, plus or minus a couple. It's then the human element afterwards that has the, the bigger impact on top of that.
And also.
Again, my question is, coming out of that, that process, if the best fit solution ends up with some sections that their size is low enough, that had that been the original projection, you would not have authorized them, do you revisit that question of, of keeping that section, or do you just live with the fact that it's going to be very small?
If there was absolutely no solution to it, it would be something, per the policy, that I would run up the flagpole with the, with the SAU to explain, you know, the, the outcomes be, you know, if, if this decision is made, this would be the outcome. If that decision was made, that would be the outcome. If there were a, a low enrollment number, you're talking, you know, like a single-digit figure as a, as one of the negatives of, of a scheduling conflict, or, you know, we run it this way, and X number of students can't get it. You know, we, we would have to have that type of conversation, and per the policy, you know, it would involve the SAU and.
Yeah, I was, thank you. The other, the other question I have is, does this current projection balance completely with our current staffing, with the exception of the positions yet to be filled?
Um, yes, there.
So, Katie, understanding that you're not going to be able to give everybody what they want, because you've got, in some cases, requests that exceed, but in terms of target sections offered, does that align with current staffing?
Yes and no. Yes and no, Tom, because if you look at target sections offered, to Tim's point earlier, we could increase PE to offer the target size that we typically offer, but we're going to end up saying no based on our staffing levels without moving forward with an unbudgeted position.
Well, but PE, you, you have a low number of, of sections offered resulting in very high enrollment. I thought the sections offered was already scaled to staff. I was just looking to confirm that.
Yes, it's scaled to staff. So if you were to look at how many sections the suggested number would be, it would, it would include increasing staff. And then to your point, the, the overall numbers ended up being fine, but, you know, people didn't get their favorite classes to teach, because we, you know, you have to make decisions based on what the student requests are and what makes most sense. And I think Tim did a good job of explaining some of those decisions. And then to Holly's point, social studies, the numbers are high. Could that have warranted increased staffing that was not budgeted for, potentially? So, so decisions were made to meet the existing staffing levels rather than.
Okay, so you're saying, you're saying the target sections offered in this list do map to our current staffing?
Yes.
With, with the possible exception of the open positions that have not yet, that are planned but not yet hired?
Yes.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
We have a sense for why we have so many requests for PE that we can't fill.
We can't fill the position?
Kids, I mean, no, the.
Kids won't get the, kids. Kids won't get the opportunity. They want to take a PE class, and they're blocked out of it because there isn't a section for them.
Because we lowered the staff. I mean, we had two full, 20 people before.
Well, we had two full.
Three, actually, yeah. And now we're down to one and a half.
1.6. So we cut back thinking that one would partially be able to, because we've got that policy change in allowing students to get credit. That would reduce demand. Maybe it didn't.
Well, it probably reduced demand, but it didn't get it down to 1.6, right? The demand isn't met by the 1.6 is what I think you're saying.
There's also the potential that we said no to non-freshmen this year because of COVID and hoped that they would have an alternative credit source, but then potentially some didn't do a sport or didn't have an outside activity, and so now you have like a doubling, a ripple effect of more than typical. I mean, it's hard, it's hard to say, but just looking at the requests now, there's more than the 1.6, but that could just be an anomaly based on the fact that we were 1.0 this, this year.
I guess my real question is, and maybe it's kind of a loaded question, because I guess I kind of wonder if some of, if there are students who basically need an unstructured hour in their day, you know, do something that's social, you know.
If you're asking, if you're asking me, I, I think that's a really great spot for kids.
I mean, and so, you know, we've had a couple tough school years, and so, you know, maybe we're seeing, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, but a PE teacher, a Point Four PE teacher is, I realize it's not budgeted, but it is not the most expensive thing in our budget, and it may be cheaper than trying to deal with kids, other social and emotional needs that might be able to be fulfilled by an hour of walking in the woods or hitting a ball. I don't know. That's my very articulate way of putting it. Yeah.
I think that's a perfect way of putting it. What will happen is Tim will get through the process, and just like Rick used to, if there's a section or something that is not budgeted, then it becomes my problem to see if we can fund it to meet the student's request. And one of the questions I would have back to Tim is, how many of those students signing up are also athletes that could be getting their credit through their sport? Because some of our athletes are choosing to do both. And one of the things we had worked to do was to see if we could move some of them to that. If, if the board doesn't want to continue in that direction, we can look at hiring it. But I think being almost four months away, to Liz's point, it's, it's not that expensive to find that in the budget. The more expensive part is the, actually, the benefit side of it, your New Hampshire retirement, those pieces, because it becomes a full-time position. But Tim and I have already had discussions. I think he's done some great work with figuring out sections and compromising and, and really working hard at the master schedule, and I do see if he comes back with a need, whether it be a math section or whatever it may come to, that we'll look at the potential for funding that in the budget.
Well, does it have to be a full-time, so, I mean, does it have to be a full-time position? So if we, right now, if we were able to fill our 1.6, and we got another two months down the road, we get closer to real time, and then you hire a Point Four or even a Point Two, I mean, I don't know what, it just, I don't know, I hate to turn kids away from classes that they're asking for, even if they have an alternative path. I mean, I had one of those kids who took PE during the day and played sports all at night, and needed, and needed that. So I think there are kids who need that, and if, if we can get it, it's cheap, it's, it's cheap money. So I would support it if, if we could find some creative way to do it, and maybe a part-time position is more attractive, because it doesn't require the benefits and.
Yeah, I think that the problem with the part-time position is finding the individuals that are out there that want it, on, on the other end. But sometimes it's attractive to somebody who may be recently retired and is looking to make some income or have a fixed schedule where they teach two mornings, you know, two periods every morning, and then they're done for the day. But I, I have total confidence in Tim that he will advocate for that if, if there's the need, and then it becomes my problem of funding it and just letting the board know the funding source.
Yeah, just to, I 100% agree with Liz's mentality and your thoughts on that, but I just had a question on the sports side. I was just curious about how many of our students, athletes do take advantage of earning that credit that they can, and how well-known that process is. Because I'm talking to some and having one that has not utilized that, just curious if we, if that's a well-understood process for most of our athletes.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a really good question to ask, because probably there's just a, some, to some degree, a lack of knowledge, so why don't we gather that information and bring it back for June?
That would be great. And I just want to comment on, for the public, and I think that this was, this is a really interesting process, and it shows why maybe in October, sorting the spreadsheet by class size isn't always the most effective way of really understanding what our class sizes are, because Tom brought up a really good point. You know, you're going to, you're going to shoot for two sections of certain classes because you have 30 requests in your, or 28 requests or whatever, and we have to do two sections, because that's over. And we are going to have sections that have 20 kids and 10 kids. It just, that's just sort of what happens. And he's right, like, try to balance as much as you can and work through it as much as you can, but we are going to have sections of 10, and it's so important when people do that sort to recognize that this is a second section or a third section. We're meeting the needs of our students, and, you know, a, a teacher who teaches two sections of AP US History, for example, is, you know, she's, they're, they're combining the efforts for both those two classes, and it doesn't matter if it's 20 in one and 10 in the other, you still needed the two sections. So I think this process is really helpful, and I hope it's enlightening to.
Holly, can I just piggyback on what you just said?
Sure, and then Kate, after you, then Kate.
And, and what I, what I wanted to say is that it's also important to understand that we've got staff, and this, this list is structured to optimize utilization of our staff.
Right.
And if you've got the staff there and they're available to teach, what is the value of eliminating a single class? Just because it's small. the value of eliminating a single class? Just because it's small and have the teacher doing something that may not be optimum for the school. So, so there's a lot, like you said, there's a lot to consider when looking at individual classes.
Great. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
And Kate?
I actually just had one more brief comment about PE. And that is that the opposite of the students who are getting their PE credit in sports and in school because they need that extra time are the sophomores who really have a lot of angst around PE and really don't want to take that extra half credit. And if they don't, so they want to get it over with. So if they're not getting it when they're a sophomore, that angst increases every year when they're just trying to get a class to get the credit that they need to graduate. So I think it's really, I understand, and the need is there obviously to prioritize for seniors. But I, I don't want to do that and take something away from the sophomores who really need it also.
Yeah, because it does, it builds. You're the kid who like, didn't get your PE credit as a sophomore. And now how are you going to fit it as a senior? And you want to do senior options. You want to do this, you want to do that. So I definitely can hear that. And I am interested in what you were saying. It could be COVID-related. Like, kids who didn't maybe make the varsity team this year might not have decided to play their sport that they were going to play their sophomore year. And now do they, do they even have the alternate credit? So they're going to take gym? Like, yeah. So we have to figure that out. But I certainly think the more kids taking gym, the better. So.
I agree.
Holly, I have one.
Yes, Cindy.
Holly, uh.
Cindy first, then Tom.
All right, Tom. Kind of going on something that Tom was kind of leaning toward, I think. So just for an example, on the personal finance, you're going to run three sections at 25 total they could have. You only have 52. Do we ever historically drop a class? I mean, when you get those, say, because it's all on semester one. So say it doesn't fit, you have one on first, second, and third period, and then the kids get their schedule and they're, all of a sudden, they want to sleep in for options or whatever. So now, period one has five kids and the other two have a full class. Do we ever, have we historically ever shifted class completely out of the schedule?
Well, I can't answer historically beyond, you know, my five years in this position.
Yeah.
The, the challenge with that is the, to Tom's point just now, the contracts are out. We're paying employees for, for full-time. And so what would we put in the place of that? So it would also have to most likely be something quasi-related to their area of certification. I mean, you could teach one outside, but sometimes, you know, the, the personal finance person might not be the best option for teaching honors lit or whatever. So you have to kind of look, what, what could we do last minute when all the kids have their schedules? And then that, you know, by creating a new section of something else at that time, might then disrupt X number of, of students. So it's a challenge. I mean, in our larger districts that are not ours, it's a lot easier because you can make a couple shifts, add a section of English nine, lower the class size, and you could do that the first day of school. But with 850 students, you just don't have as much flexibility in the schedule.
Okay. Thank you so much for this. This is really helpful. We're going to move on.
Holly?
Yes, Tom.
You forgot me.
Well, I'm sorry. No.
I'm not here to poke you.
It's okay. I know. Go ahead, Tom.
Um, this, this is sort of, this is more directed to, to Andy, but we've had conversations in the recent past, acknowledging that our experiences with mixed mode and remote learning clearly make other options available. The two extremes are for students who really want to take something that we can't, that we don't have room for, allowing them to do remote learning on campus, whether through Velax or, or some other approved method where they just go to the room and log on without having to be remote from the school, but the instruction is remote. And the opposite is true. We've talked about the fact that we now know that our staff is very, some of them are very accomplished at teaching remotely. And he talked about the possibility of offering openings to our other schools in the area that might have students that, for instance, want to get an AP course that isn't offered at their school, where we might have a small enrolled class, that student could remote in to our AP class. And I'm wondering if we are any closer to the reality of either of those options.
I think the discussions have been occurring between the principals. Rick has been participating with his colleagues from what I'll call the South Central Region around potentially sharing those type of offerings. You know, you have staff with particular expertise that we're not always able to get at, at each school. So that's one option that's out there. Two is, I think in some ways, we have to start to look beyond the traditional school day for some of our courses. Because I think there would be a group of students who would be willing to take a course that began at 2:30 to 3:15. It's just, we've always been locked in into that traditional school hours. So I think that's a piece we need to look at. And then I think another cost-effective way, if there's an offering that we can't make a reality that kids want, then we need to look at it, you know, in some sort of hybrid form, because it could occur again outside the normal school day. And you could potentially be very cost-effective because you could just be paying a teacher for an added section of that course instead of a, a different stipend. And that would allow us all of a sudden to offer a course, you know, at, you know, six o'clock at night for somebody who wants to teach remotely. So I think in our internal discussions, there have been a lot of things that have happened during COVID that will allow greater flexibility as we move into the future. And we just need to start refining them and take advantage of them. Because I think many of our teachers have enjoyed it. I think it will allow students greater flexibility in schedule choices. And I think it really has started to talk more about the logistics of, you know, like, when I look at, because it came up tonight, the AP French number, it's eight. Well, the question is, are there four schools around us that don't have AP French at all? That may like to have certain kids pay a stipend to participate in our class? Or we exchange four AP seats in French for some other remote course that we struggle to offer? So I think there are a number of things that Rick has been participating in that are exciting that we'll pass along to Tim as he takes over the reins.
Can we have an agenda item in the near future to specifically address this in terms of what the board needs to do to, to promote this if it's, does in fact have board support?
I, I think the answer is, if the board wants an agenda item, I wouldn't be proposed that, opposed to that. And then I would suggest maybe we find one or two small ways to start and grow from there. So in some ways, you're looking at a, a remote component of your own high school that exists on a more permanent basis. Because we also saw some students, there were small groups, but some students excelled in this environment because that whole face, face interaction is not their cup of tea.
Okay. Well, any board member can, can request an agenda item, but the board as a whole needs to approve to take action on it. So I, I'm requesting it, oops, I'm requesting it as a, as a agenda item.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I'll put in my notes. Okay, let's move on to, Sam, pretty much after this, we're going to move on to some other information. You're welcome to stay, but just so you know, probably not.
It's really boring.
Probably not what you want to say. You're welcome to stay.
We have better things to do on a beautiful night.
So we're moving on to discussion fiscal year 2021 revenue and expense report.
At our last meeting, we had done the revenue and expense report. And I had brought up the question of looking at, did we want to utilize our unreserved fund balance? The board said they wanted more information. So what we did is, Kelly has provided an update of the revenue and expense report. And I'd like to thank Kelly and Linda who worked behind the scenes on this. And they are projecting as of 5/7/21 that we will have $1,724,647 in a fund balance. Much of this is, there are really four major areas. One is transportation savings because of the pandemic. Two is co-curricular program savings. Again, a lot of it because of the pandemic. Three is special education because of the way we've delivered many of our services during the pandemic, and again, with regular education. So those four items really make up what I'll call the excess from a typical year. So when we take that unreserved fund balance and we subtract the athletic trust that was approved by the voters, the maintenance trust that was approved by the voters, and our retained fund balance of $180,760, that gives us total reductions or obligations of $345,760. So the projected fund balance as of tonight would be $1,378,706. Now, we all know that the, the taxpayers are seeing a reduced revenue coming down from the state of New Hampshire because of budget decisions they have made. So this will help if we're going to return that. One of the pieces that I had proposed and that I'm, I'm going to discuss is just, did we want to utilize any of that money regarding maintenance items or items that we felt were a priority? So what I asked Kelly to do is look at FY '23, '24, '25, of major items that we know are on the way, and to have a discussion tonight whether we wanted to take no action and just return every dollar, take some action, and return whatever's left after we encumber the expenses, whatever the board may choose. So first of all, Kelly, you did the proposed use of anticipated year-end fund balance. The first number there, the new item of $30,000, it's on the sheet. It's not something Kelly and I are recommending that we do now. It is more taking a look at our co-op facilities as we start to prepare for an enrollment spike. We're presently doing a study in Brookline. And that company, if we so choose at some point in the next fiscal year, can expand that study to the co-op as well. And it'd be an approximate dollar amount of about $30,000. They would look at our projected enrollments. They would look at our buildings. They would make recommendations around energy, items that need updating, many of them we already have in Kelly's capital improvement plans. So we wanted you to be aware of that because that's most likely going to occur at some level, even if we don't decide to fund, well, say, the $30,000 option. Because there's a, a free component where they do a study first, obviously trying to get themselves to a, a contract, and then obviously trying to get themselves in the eventual mix if we were to pass a bond for significant items. The next piece is our Hollis Brookline High School tech plan year three. We had proposed a tech plan, which we have funded years one and two. And year three would be $115,174. This still works off the exact plan that Rick had submitted to this board and the budget committee. And that would be the fiscal amount for FY '23. So if you were to choose to fund the tech plan, you provide us with technology sooner than we had anticipated. And you take out a guaranteed item of $115,174, which is a tech item, which is really not a capital improvement, but it's definitely an expense that's on the way. The largest, most expensive phase of our roofs is also scheduled for FY '23 at $195,000. Now, we had intentionally a number of years back, broken the roof into sections, both at the high school and the middle school, to avoid going to a bond, as well as to get out of the habit of the entire roof needs to be fixed at once. Because if you go through a difficult economic stretch, you may have to go one or two years where you delay a roof. And if that's the entire high school roof at probably a million five, you could potentially end up with issues. So Kelly met with a number of companies probably five years ago, and this was the suggestion to break our facilities into sections and then manage those sections and kind of get into, well, say, a steady dollar amount allocated to roofing, so you don't see a large tax spike. You know, I think this year, the section was 100 and something thousand. Next year, it's 195. We also have the oldest section of the middle school roof, scheduled in FY '23 of 100,000. So kind of in that first section is $440,174. We had started the replacement phase of the windows here at the middle school, because again, just trying to keep up regular maintenance and get things on phases. So phase two would be $80,000. Priority area three, we have our paving products, projects. We have several smaller sections of the middle school that are in need of paving. One of the pieces that I'm going to highlight and talk further about in a couple minutes is the, trying to create a second lane up to the rear of the high school. Because that is just an absolute nightmare dismissal, especially for those parents who aren't trying to pick up a student. They're just trying to get to the parking lot and park a car. You, you end up sitting in that line. From what we understand, we can widen that and get a second lane and have what I'll call a pickup lane and the right lane to be able to access the high school parking lot, which is becoming a larger scale of people trying to get there. Because with the new turf field, you have many of our athletes and families trying to get back up there for games at the end of the school day. We've talked numerous times about the dirt teachers lot, which is scheduled for FY '24. And then the high school back parking lot, the whole thing is scheduled for FY '25, and that's a cost of $300,000. Then a number of years ago, we had folks in, and one of the things that was recommended by Homeland Security was to take the office that abuts the foyer at the high school and punch a hole through there so you'd have kind of a, a vision window, almost like a telewindow at the bank, which would enhance your security. So that had been scheduled for FY '23. I will say that we have, under Bob's leadership, have very impressive reports back from Homeland Security. And our buildings are very, very secure. So this is just an enhancement to an already very secure building. So when I look at trying to balance the, the fund balances, I'm looking at it through the lens of, you know, what are we potentially sending back from Hollis? What are we potentially sending back from the Brookline Elementary? And what are we potentially sending back from the co-op? And each of those districts, the elementary districts, they're also looking to encumber funds for projects. So in Hollis, the board has already encumbered $300,000 to take care of a heating component that kind of needs enhancement. So that money that could have been returned to the taxpayers will not be. In Brookline, that discussion occurs next week with their unreserved fund balance. And when I see here at the co-op, I do see the need of the balancing act. So when I look at the priorities, my recommendation to the board would be that we have moved forward with the tech plan year three, because that automatically gets equipment to students. You know, that's not teachers, that's not other things. Those are computers that would be directly in English, science, math, wherever phase three is for that. And then I think we have basically fulfilled our tech plan and get into more of what I would call a maintenance cycle. I really think the board should look at the next major section of the roof of $195,000. I think at least encumbering that, if we could get it done this summer, that would be fantastic. But knowing we have the money to take care of that would be a, a big weight off the shoulders. And then I look at the circular drive expansion in the back parking lot of $60,000, give or take a few thousand dollars, as my three biggest areas where I think we can make headway in balance. Because that would ask the board to spend $370,174, which still allows us to return just over a million dollars to the taxpayers. And I do believe the number of unreserved fund balance still has the potential to grow. Because Kelly does a wonderful job of making sure everything's encumbered. And this is the time of year where we're saying to teachers, or principals, or athletes, are you purchasing that? And sometimes the answer is no. So I, I do see that potentially growing. This allows us to, to continue to move forward with our capital improvements program. We have some paving initiatives budgeted. If we advance it with the other. If we advance it with the other 60,000, we're made nice strides. Two of the significant pieces, the dirt lot and the back lot, are not scheduled for a couple of years, so I don't know if we want to jump into prepaying those, it's the way I would look at it. And then the older roof section, I would say that would be in the maintenance trust in this year's coming budget because, again, that would allow us to keep the maintenance trust about a steady number, so it would be questioning about the same from the taxpayers. So from a tax point of view, we're not seeing that spike of up and down. We're trying to get to level funding and not have jumps in our budget. I'll happily take any questions. I know there were some discussions about looking at a bond. We could potentially, other than the computers, bond pretty much every item that's there. My caution would be that it's just basically a million-dollar bond, which is not a, I hate to say it, a significant amount to be bonding. Number two, there's the potential, if enrollment goes as projected, that we could be looking at needing a bond for our facility at the co-op, and I don't mean a new building, but I do mean a potential addition either at the middle school or the high school. And we're starting to see this enrollment creep in the sense of next Thursday's number in Knights Meeting in Brookline, our kindergarten numbers are up, our grade one numbers are up, and we have the highest enrollment in kindergarten in Hollis since I've been here. So we are starting to see a trend where all of a sudden the middle school could be 450, 470, which would create some issues. I mean, could we survive right away? Yes. We would have people on cots, and not everybody would have a classroom, but you could, you know, you could wind through a couple of years. It's trying to determine, which is a very difficult conversation, is this going to be an enrollment bump, which is two or three years, which maybe it's appropriate to go to some folks on cots, or is this going to be the new normal and you need to expand by a few classrooms here and there? So I'll take any questions about the list that Kelly proposed or why I made the recommendations I did. I did put them under deliberations. We don't need to take action tonight, okay? It's just more getting it out there. We would need to take action in June because the auditors are going to want to see some formal acceptance to the board.
Go ahead, Krista.
I don't support bonding maintenance items at all. First of all, I just don't think that that is being fair to the taxpayer to take a bond out there, to put the risk that the maintenance item won't pass and then we push it off another thing. And quite frankly, I don't know if the town of Hollis should take on the responsibility of 70% of a maintenance item. So I would struggle with that one. So I do like these ideas. I was just wondering, do you have any idea what Hollis or Brookline, what you would recommend they return to the taxpayer, just so we'd have an idea of what they're returning as well?
Well, they're most typically a much lower.
Right.
You know, Hollis will probably be between 100,000 and 200,000 because they've encumbered 300,000. And right now, we're projecting Brookline right around 175,000. But the other piece of note is Brookline, for the first time, supported the article regarding retaining a fund balance.
Oh, okay.
So they will be able to retain a little over, I think it's about 110,000. So that gives them some, well, I'll say, greater flexibility that they haven't had in the past.
I do want to just add a little information. I did receive some communication from the chairman of the budget committee, and just to remind, you know, everyone that at the co-op annual meeting, when the FY '22 budget was presented, she presented a $650,000 unreserved fund balance, and I wouldn't say she made any promises with it, but there was some conversation about returning that to the taxpayer. So just another little...
So Darlene's recommending 650 or recommending...
She's not recommending it. She's just bringing up...
Well, we've got 1.176.
Well, that's not tied to the same as she's meaning we should return the entire thing or...
The budget committee has not had a chance to meet since the co-op meeting, so that's another factor in all of this, is that the Budcom has not weighed in on this yet. So we can take a vote tonight on something, or as Andy said, we could wait until June. It's not the budget committee's decision necessarily at all, but she just wanted to be sure that we recalled what she presented to the taxpayers in public to, you know, and at her, at that moment, she talked about $650,000, and I believe she presented it as being returned back to the taxpayer. And did some math and some, because she's really good at that stuff, and she estimated that she's still estimated, co-op tax rate impacts were still estimated to increase by 13% in both Hollis and Brookline, so approximately 13%. So, but she did bring that up.
Okay.
So it would be, if we were to say spend all of it, that would not be really in keeping with what she suggested at the co-op meeting.
Well, we don't have to keep with what they suggest. We can keep with what they suggest. But even that gives us 526,174, and that's more than what Andy's proposing. So, and I guess I agree wholeheartedly with you about not bonding roofs because the problem with when you bond a roof, you end up for the 10-year, it's like buying a car, so in having a payment for it. So for 10 years, you now pay for the roof that is up there disintegrating, and then by the time you get the bond paid off, you need another bond to pay for the roof, and it's not a good, it's not good for maintenance items. I have practical questions. Do we know that the equipment that we want for year three of the tech plan is stuff that we can actually buy on the market?
That's a good point.
Because I know that, like, I'm still using a clunky computer because they can't get any at work, and we can't get webcams, and I know all that stuff is still on back order. So, like, is it available?
I would say there would be some potential delays, but if you consider that it wasn't going to be into, you know, the two years from this fall, I would think we would probably have it December or January because we are starting to see things...
Yeah, I mean, I would say like two months ago, we got a ton of materials in this category that all of a sudden they became available.
Okay.
So I haven't checked on year three tech plan per se, but I would have to believe that we'd be able to get some, and if not right now over the summer, to Andy's point, we'd be in line to get them.
Sooner rather than later, okay. And I kind of similar questions about availability of contractors because we are in a crazy housing bubble, and not only are supplies exceptionally expensive right now, but folks are not available to do stuff. And so I'm just wondering, based upon availability, you know, are we more likely to be able to get a lot done than we are getting something else done, like the roof? So I just, I don't know. Maybe some more information and maybe actually confirming too that these estimates that we got a few years ago are still going to be valid and the actual materials available to get things done. Because that may, that may impact our choices. I mean, and despite the fact that they were standing in line in southern parts of the U.S. trying to get gas, we're still looking at relatively lower oil prices than we've seen historically, so it might be a good time to get some of the paving done.
Right. Well, in terms of, in terms of the roof, what it would do is it would allow the money to be encumbered. So now, even if we couldn't get it done this summer, we can be entering into a contract with somebody for next spring as opposed to waiting to see if our budget passed in March of next year and then having to start the bid process then. Because one of the big things is getting ahead of the contractors. Now, we have the major project starting this summer in Hollis, and we have been able to secure all the needed services and vendors to make that happen. The other piece is we've been regularly working with roofers, and because of the phased approach, they know they're going to have, well, I'll say, regular work. So they are, you know, obviously probably going to work hard to stay in that cycle if they're the winning bid.
And I guess the only other comment is I would honestly like to see binding the paving projects, pretty much everything under Priority Three, off at the same time. I mean, even if that's what we picked is our, because I think we're going to get a better deal if we have somebody out here one time than in, you know, that's done as three phases, and it's less disruptive.
And again, I have no problem whatever direction the board provides us, if any, of how they want to go.
Beth?
Sure. No, I just, I have a couple of specific questions too, but I guess the overall comment too, I agree with what others have said historically, have never liked the idea of a bond for maintenance stuff. I don't look at it very much different than homeownership. I mean, I have anticipated costs, and you have to balance needs and money and make those decisions. I did have just a couple of questions. Liz touched on the availability because I have, those were questions for me, roof and tech availability, but are the costs also pretty much up to date because we've seen not just availability issues this year, but huge spikes in costs due to that? So are those pretty accurate for what, if we were to go for that right now, are those what we'd be expecting to pay?
I would say from the tech point of view, we've seen a slight increase, but it hasn't been monumental. I'll use a Chromebook probably went from, say, 260 to 300, but I do seem to think they're starting to head back down now, and we're getting more and more calls of we have Chromebooks because companies have stocked up and now they can't unload them. With regard to the roof, yes, costs are up tremendously for like sheets of plywood. I mean, it went from basically $32 to $66 for a Hollis project. So I can firm up an estimate, and that's why I said you don't necessarily need to take action tonight. I just felt it was important to get everything out there so in June, we could make whatever decisions the board wants regarding these items and then move forward. And I will ask Kelly if she can get a, how recent that quote is.
Sure. I will tell you that the tech plan that was presented to you two years ago was 104, 174, so she recalculated year three with the cost that we just paid.
That's what I was hoping, is that it was adjusted just because...
Yeah, absolutely.
Especially after this year. Just two more questions real quick. Because I'm the newer one around here, and the sections of the roof, how many are there for each?
That's a good question. I don't even know that.
And the life expectancy? I was just curious because I don't know that, and just to understand the full picture of the cycle, like, how long are we anticipating the roof lasts in each of these sections? And how many sections?
Once we do a section, we're looking at somewhere between 20 and 40 years.
Perfect, yeah.
Your typical roof piece. And I believe, and I could be off by one or two, but I think she divided the high school into seven sections, and part of that was because the high school has what I'll call some Taran gravel components as well as some shingle components.
Yep. And any idea with the middle school, because I know that was also phased?
I'm not...
That's okay. I'm just, I'm just curious because I really have no idea.
Yep.
So I was curious for understanding the number of years. And then just, oh, another quick comment about the enrollment. I really, really think that that's a high priority to kind of study and realize, especially from the Brooklyn side.
$30,000.
Yeah. And whether it's $30,000 or what we need to, I think that I'm pretty fearful, not just of, you know, we live in an attractive community and people coming in, but just potential really big changes with some housing development potential in Brookline, and that could happen pretty quickly. And just to be prepared for that because we need to start looking at that now, in my opinion. We can't wait until we hear what decisions are made because that's what happens there. We have no control over, and we are going to get, you know, an impact regardless. And then last real quick question, that bottom priority, the high school Homeland Security one, are you describing something like similar to CSDA what was put in?
Yes.
The window.
Okay. Yep, okay. That was new this past year and in effect there. So, okay, thank you.
Any other? Cindy?
I have a couple of questions and then I have one request, I guess. I understand, and I think that the tech plan, like Andy said, that has to do with students, and I would support that. I would also support the main office. That's been talked about for four or five years, and if it's coming up next year, I mean, again, that's about students and security for the building. And I do worry about the cost of everything, but I think, being the Budcom rep, I think what I need to know is from a sense of the board, are we even considering a bond? Because that's come up multiple times, and when I go to this meeting next week, I think we need a sense of the board or a vote so that we know what to say.
So I don't know if we can vote on that because that would be, but so far, I've heard Beth and Liz and Krista will all say...
And just, I mean, that's where I stand, but I also know that Tom feels pretty pressured. I'm curious of what his rationale is.
I'm going to let Tom speak. I know he's going to, he's going to speak. But so far, my sense, from what I'm hearing, is that, and I'll give you my sense right now, I don't want to see us fund maintenance items with a bond. I would say potentially new spaces. So when I look at this list, I see turning the teachers' lot into a paved lot. Maybe you could make a case for that being on a bond, but I don't see anything else on this list that I would see as a bondable item. And I am truly concerned because of enrollment issues and also because our high school's always been too small, that I would rather see us look to bond in the future after we do a facility study and see what we really need. And potentially, maybe the dirt teachers' lot should just stay on hold, in my opinion, until we figure that out. That's just my opinion. I mean, you just cherry pick what you cherry pick, right?
I think giving them a sense of the board may have them look at this through different lenses...
Right.
When we talk next week. So I just wanted to have an idea.
And are you, what's your sense? Because I don't know, like, are you for it?
I agree. I mean, I agree. I mean, especially like Krista said, I don't see, you know, Hollis taking on the bigger responsibility. I don't think that the taxpayers are going to want us to support that. You know, there's, everything on this list is just stuff that we keep kicking down the road. And I have said, even at the Budcom meetings, we can't keep doing this, and we have no guarantee that we would get a bond passed. So now we're talking like two years down or three years down. So these things really need to be acted on before that.
And so just for the whole general kind of consensus of the meeting, I'm getting the sense that we won't take a vote tonight because it's like too many questions, but I would like to be able for you to go to the budget committee and at least have some ideas to what we're leaning on in terms of where we're looking at in terms of the number. So I think after we discuss a little bit, we'll kind of maybe throw out some ideas with that and give you a little bit more of a sense. I don't think we'll be able to say this is how much we all support because we're all going to be in different places, but, you know, my number might be a little different than Krista's and than Liz's, but we can probably come to some sort of consensus next month if everyone were to vote to not return every single penny to the taxpayer. Kate, I know you have something to say because I can feel it.
I actually, just because we're talking about the bond, I would agree. I don't think a bond is necessary for maintenance, and I also think that it would be nice to do some of these, and my focus would be the stuff that impacts the kids first as well.
Great. And I have just one other question about the tech piece. So if we move to year three of the tech plan, then the rotation of tech items, will we put ourselves in a position when we're going to maintain things and replace things that we might have to replace like year three at the same time as year two or, because isn't there a lifespan of technology and that kind of thing? So I just, from the perspective, I agree that it gets into our students' hands quicker, so I do appreciate that, but is it enough of a budget item to worry that way?
Sure. I mean, I understand where you're coming from. I will say that some of year two that we have budgeted for was pre-purchased with grant funds that became available due to COVID.
Okay.
So I've, you know, when the money came available, I bought as many Chromebooks as I could.
Okay.
So year two is sort of year one and a half.
Okay. Okay. So then we'd be basically looking at like year two and a half too, okay?
Yeah.
Did you have more, Kate? I interrupted you.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. I know, Tom, that you're there, but people here are still raising their hands, so we'll get to you in a minute, okay?
Yep.
Go ahead, Liz. Well, I guess one of my comments is I don't think we need to be concerned about returning at all. And I would say take some guidance from the Hollis School District, which sounds like they are going to spend somewhere between 2/3 and 75%, and they're not apologizing for it. So they're spending more than they're sending back to the taxpayers. So if we get anywhere near the 50% mark, we should do it unapologetically because we've got items on this list. And the other thing is, you know, we're kind of talking about things for the kids, and yes, the kids are going to touch the computers, but that paving and that need for that extra lane at the high school...
The special one that's for the kids.
And the safety issues up there, and I would even say paving, the extra staffing, the... the staff lot below and doing the work above. We have sophomores who never get parking spaces up there. They can't have after-school jobs. They're, they really, their ability to participate in after-school things is impacted by the fact that they can't get a parking pass. And so I do think that that impacts the culture of the high school. And so we shouldn't say because it's pavement, it doesn't impact kids. I think that would have a bigger impact, giving sophomores parking places so they can come and go and have some flexibility, but also get to after-school activities. That's all a good thing and we should embrace it as such and not sort of say, well, it's not for kids. Let's like, you know, it's cement, it's pavement, let's apologize for it. But honestly, we need another lane up there.
Yeah.
We have a serious problem coming in and out.
No, the $60,000 for an additional lane and expansion, that's a no-brainer for me.
But I don't have any problem with spending the rest of it, especially knowing that once, well, knowing that once you get the heavy equipment on site, that's half of the battle.
Good point. So, and Mr. Solan, I'm going to ask if you have anything to say?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Surprise. I guess, first of all, I just want to clarify that I have been in support of bonding these items. And my main reason for doing so is that these are, the maintenance items, I'll call them, but the roofing and the paving, because these are things that have very long life. And they aren't like an expense that creeps up on you. And they are not things that go away real quickly. They depreciate over a long period of time, which to my understanding and my belief is consistent with bonding. I don't think it's useful to bond a small item, but cumulatively, you've got, you've got over a million dollars worth of things here that would make up a bond. It doesn't mean you have to do them all at once. It means you have the funds available and can take care of it. But having said that, I also recognize that I am in the minority in my view. So what I do ask is that at least spread the costs along a time period as was originally proposed so that it's not a small, small time window of taxpayers that contribute to these expenses. Within that context, I think the highest priority in my mind is getting a handle on the impact of expected enrollment increases because that's going to drive all kinds of understanding and needs that come forward. So this $30,000, I'm not sure exactly what that number represents, but I would really like to see a plan or an analysis done with a variety of projections that like earlier plans don't so much say when you do things as say, when this occurs, this is what needs to happen. And include in that recognition of what took place this past year regarding proposals for a facility in Brookline and keep that in the, on the table, but keep it in ownership of the co-op because I personally think that long-term, even a pre-K to 12 co-op is a positive thing. I am able to support the idea of the tech plan being brought forward from, and use these funds. I'm also can support the next phase of the high school roof so long as, again, the schedule for the future sections doesn't get further compressed as well. And I'm curious about the windows because if that has a reasonable payback as far as creating energy efficiency, it might be good to get that done as early as possible to gain those efficiencies if we've got the money. The paving to me is a little bit more of an uncertainty, not so much because I don't approve of it, but we've got a lot of moving parts. And I'd hate to see us pave something and then dig it up. So I'd really like to understand what the, what the thought process is of near-term facilities, changes that might be required, whether it be bringing in portables or pods or changing to staffing levels and things of that level so that we understand it. But in general, I think that what the superintendent has proposed makes sense with the caveat that we, that we understand where we think we're headed in the near future, again, so that we don't build something and then tear it up. Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you, Tom.
Can I circle back around for a second?
Sure, Kate.
Just in terms of what Liz was saying about paving and then Tom, they both made really good, you know, opposite points. I guess my question is looking at all of these line items, I'm assuming that those costs were made thinking that we would be doing them separately.
Correct.
Do we have any idea what the cost savings could be if we did them all at once?
I actually made that note to bring back in June because again, if, Liz mentioned if the big equipment's already there.
Right.
You know, again, we should get an economies of scale by enlarging the project. So I'll come back with that. I took the notes from Tom. I'll try to see if I can get some information on the window payback because that's one of the reasons we're doing it. And then I'll do a little more work on the entrance to the high school. And we'll just confirm with Kelly on the roof section if the 195 isn't updated or in old.
Can you just get a little bit more information on the 30,000, like?
Sure.
What, what information we would get from that? Not just like a facility, just a little bit more specifics if that's possible? I don't know. Or what they're, what they can do?
Yep.
For 30,000.
Tom, can I butt in for a moment?
Of course.
Regarding the paving, even, even our smaller projects are still pretty big projects. I think you're going to be seeing, you're getting your economies of scale. I mean, even if you wanted them to do it all, they won't do all this work at once just because of logistics. That's a lot of upheaval and you don't just do all the paving unless we want to live with, with dirt areas for weeks or months at a time. They have to tear stuff up, open it up. And when you're talking about economies of scale, you're talking about having the same equipment in for a period of time.
Good question.
Once you've got a piece of machinery in there for a week, you've reached your economies of scale. So I don't think that that, that you need to do it all at once to get the best deal. The only reason the economies might be is, is that if you anticipate prices are going to rise. But in terms of the size of the program, most of these projects we've got are standalones. They're still pretty big projects. It's not like just having your drive right done when you can have yours and your neighbor's done.
That's a good point. So thank you. So I think for, for our purposes, I think there's a, my sense, I'm going to just summarize and those of you in the board who, if I misstate this, but I want to send Cindy to the Budcom with this, my sense is that there is an appetite to, to, you know, take care of some of these items, but we have different opinions about what those items would be. I didn't get the sense that people want to spend 1.176 million dollars. I thought it was a more conservative approach than that. So the budget committee can be assured that we are, we are aware of where, what the, what the expectation was made at the, at the meeting. And, but that we are looking to maybe put some things to bed a little earlier than what has been, you know, what has been proposed with our regular budgets. Would that be a pretty accurate summary? Is that okay? Okay, great. Okay. And then Andy has a list of things to take back. We'll bring, bring that back to us. And we expect to have this item. Also, you can also tell the budget committee that it did not sound like the board was in favor of bonding many of, most of these items in general, but we were not unanimous. So that leaves me. Oh, okay. Are we done with that? Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. So committee assignments. Oh, yay. Woo-hoo. This is my job. All right. So just for, just to announce the committee assignments, and then later on in the meeting, we'll just basically say that I was allowed to do this. The policy committee will be Beth, Holly and Liz, and Beth will be the chair this year. I don't believe there's always been a chair, but the current, but the current policy committee functions well with a board member chair. Budcom rep is Cindy. Manifest signing is still Kate and Beth with Cindy, right? You guys were doing it. So you're still doing it. And Cindy's the alternate. Krista, our new SAU governing board chair, and Cindy's her, the vice chair. Krista is also our SAU budget rep and Cindy is the SAU policy rep. So they're all, I see you all the time. Our sec is Krista and Tom is covering HB Elevates, which is a position that's usually held by the chair, but there's a conflict of interest on that board. So I can't be the chair of that, be on that board, which is really fine with me. The instructional practice is steering committee, which I hope will get restarted again. Restarted, again is redundant. That's Holly, Tom and Krista on the steering committee, and I'm hoping Tim can work with that or re-steer it in a different way. We have a subcommittee on waiting that Liz and Holly sit on and a grading and assessment subcommittee that Krista and Beth sit on. And then the SAU governing board approved three new committees. One is the administrations compensation committee to look at the SAU administrations compensation. And I had interest from a few members, but I was gonna, I haven't been able to confirm with everybody, but I'm hoping Kate, you're willing to do that still. So that's great. Liz is walking in, so I will get her in a second. There's also a benefits working group committee that was, was approved. And I had a couple of people interested in that, but I, I really know that Tom Solan has been a major person involved in that and has the history and can lead new people in that. So I'm going to put Tom on the benefits committee. And then we have the rent lease facility subcommittee. And we had a suggestion of somebody who would be really, really good at it, but I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot. So I can leave that vacant until next month? Or we were hoping that you would do that, Liz?
Oh, sure.
Okay. So Liz will be on that committee.
Everybody doesn't want that one?
No, it was one that was highly recommended for you. So I believe I've covered them all. Do I have any that I'm missing?
Thanks, folks.
Because I feel like last year I missed a whole bunch. So I have them all. Okay.
I think that's enough.
So when we make the, you know, motion, that's, that's the plan. Good. I did that as fast as I could. So, okay. All right. And then now we're at deliberations. So.
A policy update.
Oh, I'm sorry. I asked for the policy update. Gina, policy update.
Sure. So a month or two ago, we talked about sending our policies over to the New Hampshire School Board Association to review and give us feedback and direction. And so I reached out to them and we are on the waitlist for summer 2022. We will move forward with that with staying in the waitlist. However, what they are doing for us right now is I sent over a list of all of our policies for all four districts, SAU included, with the last updated date. And so what they're going to do is scan through and identify some areas that we need to look on, look at specifically based on, you know, laws that have changed.
Do we know roughly when we might get the pre-scan information from them?
I would say probably we would have it back by July.
Awesome. Awesome. That's great though. That's actually awesome. Thank you.
So that's the policy update. Okay. So now we have deliberations. First item is to see what action the board will take regarding policy JLCJ concussion and head injuries. So what we'll do is we'll put the motion on the floor and then we'll kind of review where we are. So this is for third reading and adoption. So I need a motion to accept third reading and adopt policy JLCJ concussion and head injuries.
So moved.
Moved by Kate. And I need a second.
Second.
Second by Beth. So Beth has really done a great job kind of cleaning this all up. So go ahead, Beth.
Sure. I think the easiest thing, just, there's only one change or potential change we've talked about since the last two goes around. So if you're looking at the policy on the first page under two, the duty to report, I mean, it might be easier for me just to read real quickly how we kind of settled on as a, as a committee so far. So all district employees shall report any accident or incident which involves a student head injury. The report shall be filed in the same manner. When I skip down to the next sentence, additionally, teachers should report to the school nurse if a student appears to be having difficulty with academic tasks. So initially, the first part of that sentence, the first part, we talked about making the words match. We threw around a lot of different things, shall, will, must, could, should, all of these things. But we landed on shall. I think we had some different opinions or just thoughts on what shall meant, but really by definition in the dictionary, shall is a directive. It's something that needs to be done. And it's just a more formal fancy way of saying it than somebody like me was used to. So I think it reads well that way. And that was the consensus of the committee. The one that was more questionable was the additionally, teachers should. That's how it was read the first time. It was amended, I believe, in the notes to will. But we're actually, as a committee, recommending the word should. The discussion went back and forth, but I think it was pretty much a consensus among all of us in the committee meeting that should, you know, we can't require this to be done. It's, it's, it's a, it's a perception. It's, you know, and, and if we are trying to require something that's a potential perception, who's following up on it? What do we do if people don't report? It really kind of opened up a bigger concern. So the word should, we felt, you know, if a teacher has a concern, we all felt they should report it. But we just didn't feel like the stronger language was appropriate. So I think that pretty much summarizes.
That's it, right.
And it was, you know, well consensus on the, the policy committee, but I know that was, I think, the only thing that we talked about to look at for this meeting. So.
Yep. That was the only thing. Are there any questions or comments on that?
Shall and statutes mandatory.
Oh, go ahead.
What?
Just that generally statutory construction shall is a mandatory.
Thank you. Yeah, exactly. And that's actually, I'm glad you said that because that's kind of when I looked it up, it was, it was a very formal lawyer-y word, which I'm just not in my vocab, but it turns out it's a real thing. And it's, that's exactly it. So thank you.
You did a great job with this. This is a lot of work.
Thank you.
And you talked to everybody and researched. I mean, it was a lot combining and putting it all together. You really did great.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I was really just coordinating a lot of people that knew more.
Thank you very much. Did you have something, Kate?
Just quickly, the school nurse will notify the students. Why aren't we using shall there?
Should, well, should and shall are different.
Well, no, not the should. I'm sorry.
Will.
The school nurse will notify.
Oh, I'm sorry. Where is that?
The last sentence of B.
So why are we not using shall there?
That's a great question.
Didn't, you know, I think we read all the sentences, but that was.
We're so focused there. I think that's certainly, you know, I think that's.
So will and shall mean the same thing?
They really do.
Shall just has that formal thing.
And I think the word, I mean, this really, most of these words in this paragraph, we took a few out and changed some things, but it was mostly straight from recommendations from New Hampshire School Board Association. You know, the initial parts are, you know, documentation and how it's reported. But, you know, our, our school nurses do follow up. I don't know. That's a great question, but I.
Well, really, the only reason why I'm asking is because there's been so much conversation around the continuity of words.
Yes.
That one was different. So I didn't know if it was purposefully different.
We can amend it. We can certainly say we'll, we'd like, if you want to make an amendment to that will being changed to shall, we can do that and still, I think, and still approve it. So are there?
You're using will all the time in part C.
Oh, my goodness. I'm just looking ahead here, Tom. Sorry. That's true. I mean.
I think it might be because when you start to say the plan will support the students' return to full work, the word will just feels, the word shall does very much feel like a person, whereas the plan is not a person. So.
I agree. I would agree. And also, you know, to that, I agree with that. And also in that, the, under two, we're talking about formal reports, formal, you know, and things that were required by law to do. And that's where we pull in those nice big lawyer words. So I think shall kind of fits there, whereas will, you know, in the third, I agree with Holly. I think for more than one reason, I think will works. And that's why I would also probably suggest leaving the school nurse will. That's, that's not a required by law necessarily, you know, part, but it's, it's done. And they're saying that they need to do it, but. saying that they need to do it, but.
And they both technically mean the same thing.
Technically.
They mean the same thing. It's just one is more alertive, like shall makes it feel more legal, but they mean the same exact thing.
It creates the same obligation?
Absolutely. I don't know, maybe not.
The lawyer's shaking her head, but I don't know.
I shouldn't have said absolutely.
Well, to me, they feel a little different. Shall feels more formal, and, but I don't, but again, that's why we talked about perception, so I don't know if it's worth really batting that back and forth, because I think it's the.
I don't think it's worth batting it back and forth.
I'm not concerned with the word, the nurse, or the line that the nurse will contact the parents. I'm not concerned with that. I was very concerned with giving teachers a mandatory requirement to do something that I thought was subjective.
It is subjective.
So I'm completely good with the language as it is.
Awesome.
Okay. So, Tom, are you comfortable?
Yeah, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other on will versus shall. I just didn't know if they were, number one, equivalent, and number two, if the goal was to have them be equivalent in this paragraph.
I think we're good at this point, but thank you. So can we take a vote? All those in.
Roll call.
Roll call, oh, that's right. Beth, Beth.
Is that with the way I read it?
Yes, no amendment.
Perfect. Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
Liz, aye.
Holly, aye.
Krista, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Tom?
Tom, aye.
Great. Okay, so, next.
Next up. Love when we pass the policy.
Yeah.
Thinking that.
Unfortunately, we don't have Rick here to talk about this policy, so hopefully I could try, but if not, I might need some help from the Policy Committee if you don't mind. So the next policy is JICD, so I need a motion to accept the first reading of policy JICD, Student Discipline and Due Process as Presented.
So moved.
That's Beth, seconded by Krista. Is there anyone?
Well, I can say that we took a look at JICD, made some necessary changes. The title had due process in it. We had a separate due process policy that was recommended, so we incorporated all the language of due process into this since it had due process in the title, and due process is such an important piece to student conduct and discipline, so we just thought it made better sense to incorporate them all together. Clearly, there are a lot of changes, all the underlying pages and pages of underlying items, but the bulk of the changes were, we're identifying and defining what certain pieces are. What is a remove, what does it mean to be removed from the classroom? What does detention mean? You know, what is Saturday detention, et cetera, et cetera? So some of these are, you know, we started with the recommended policy from School Board Association, and then made sure they fit what we do in our district to make sure it was appropriate. So Saturday detention was one of those items that is kind of unique to us. And, once again, just made sure that, that, you know, the superintendent has the authority to suspend for longer than the 10 days, and so there were just some pieces of designee or who or whatever, but we made it fit to what we do in our district. So we really just added a ton of meat. As you can see, it was the very beginning, just on page one, that existed before we made just a change or two.
So since this is for first reading, if you have any, like, thing that stands out at you, it would be great for us to know, but if not, this is an opportunity for you to read through this and send some communication to us at the Policy Committee level, and we can, we can dig into it more. It is a meaty policy, and it is, you know, I mean, we have time, but I don't want to spend hours since the first reading.
Do I get to attend the next policy meeting?
You will be at the next policy meeting, because I just.
Save my comments for the.
Yes, okay, you can save your, good, you can dig in. And also, to be honest, Rick isn't here, and he did the majority of the legwork on this, so I would like to just pass this for first reading, and then we'll dig into it a little bit more second reading. Is that okay?
Can I just comment and discussion?
Sure.
Could you go through it with his/her versus their?
Yeah.
Updates?
Yeah, we have that.
And would it be possible to get a review of it by our legal counsel before we are asked to vote on it for adoption?
Yeah, we can do both of those things through the Policy Committee. We can send it over to Jim for a look at it. We'll change the his/her, which actually.
That was noted.
Throughout, we have a note throughout the document replaces her with their, and we have to insert the word "and" before will be made available in Section 4, but we'll make sure we make those changes. So yes, we can send this over to legal counsel.
It doesn't have to be done on this one, when you feel it's appropriate, but just with so much reference to RSA, I'd like to have someone make sure on two things. One is that it's accurate, and the other is that we're not overly constraining it to RSA in the sense that, you know, how sometimes we restate what's already in RSA.
Okay, so.
Hey Gina, do you have your pen out? Strike the words "at all times" in that very first sentence that you, in the paragraph you added. Which one? I'm happy.
Oh, "at all times," okay.
Just because, because we don't control the kids when they're not in school, and if you take those words out, it takes care of that problem.
Okay, so that's something we'll bring back to policy, change that, and.
I'm just hoping she remembers it. She, if she writes it down, then I don't have to remember it.
Right, so at this point, I'd like to take a roll call vote for the first reading. Go ahead.
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
Liz, aye.
Holly, aye.
Krista, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Tom?
Tom, aye.
Okay, so the next policy, I need a motion to accept the first reading policy JLF, reporting of child abuse in the elect as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Beth.
Second.
Seconded by Kate. And Kate are movers and shakers tonight. Okay, so this one is reporting child abuse, again, another one that has been, you know, updated by the state or by New Hampshire School Board Association. So we worked to make sure that we were including language that included designated volunteers and contracted service providers instead of just all school employees, because we do have some people who aren't actually employees, and that we changed the word "prize" to notify. We worked a little bit on the written report, and then we added the language that we're already doing these things, so we actually have a sign in the school that's readily visible to students in the form provided by Division of Youth, the Division, is that what you guys call it here, that contains instructions. So we're already doing that, so we wanted that to be in the policy. And then finally, we're not legally required to provide training every year, but we, it's recommended that we do, so, and we are actually doing it upon the beginning of service, right? And then we do sort of an annual refresher. So we've included that as well. Again, this is first reading, so we can dig in more as a Policy Committee. If anybody has any questions? Okay.
We need to work on the word notify.
Okay, you can make a different word, sure, we'll work on that. Work on the word notify. Let's make a note of that in the meeting. Great, thank you. Okay, so, all in favor for first reading?
Roll call.
Roll call vote, Beth.
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
Liz, aye.
Holly, aye.
Krista, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Tom, aye.
Tom, okay. Okay, and then, here we go. Oh, my gosh, did we, oh, wow, okay. So I need, I need a motion to see what action the board will take regarding policy BCA. I need a motion that the board by roll call state agreement to adhere to policy BCA Board Member Code of Ethics. So I need a motion?
So moved.
By Beth.
Second.
Second by, was that Krista that I heard over there?
Yes.
Okay. Does someone want to speak to this? Do we need to speak to this?
Sure. This is just our annual Code of Ethics that we renew every year, the meeting after the reorganization.
Great, so is there any questions on that? Okay.
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
Liz, aye.
Holly, aye.
Krista, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Tom, aye.
Tom, aye. Okay, motion carries, 7-0. I haven't been announcing the votes, I'm sorry. They've all carried, 7-0. And then we have, I need a, okay, so do I have to read this thing? I think she's got me outlined. The board was informed about the state requirements.
Just, the DFA is our annual investments that we adopt. This doesn't really come into play at the co-op. In some districts, you have large amounts of money coming in at tax time, so districts will make the decision to invest those funds. Ours are done through the town and then allocated on, I'll say, as a need basis. So as much as we're required to have one, we don't really have any investments, but we just acknowledge that we have the ability to do that should there be a large balance.
Thank you. So I need a motion to adopt policy DFA investments.
So moved.
Beth, seconded.
Second.
By Kate. At this point, we'll just kind of move through that.
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
Liz, aye.
Holly, aye.
Krista, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Tom?
Tom, aye.
Great. Okay, and then we need a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for administrative and non-union compensation.
As discussed in.
As discussed in our non-public.
So moved.
By Beth.
Second.
By Kate. Second by Kate, moved by Beth, seconded by Kate. I think at this point, we'll just take a vote on that?
Yeah, I'm just saying Tom didn't get.
I know, Tom, you weren't a part of this, so.
I understand.
I figured you would, okay.
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
I'll abstain.
Oh, were you not here?
Yeah, oh, yeah, sorry, Liz. Liz wasn't there.
Holly, aye.
Krista, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Tom abstains.
Tom's abstaining. Okay, so that is a 5-0-2 vote. Okay.
Who else missed it?
Liz.
Must have gone quickly then.
Surprisingly.
Not at all.
We didn't get behind Tom until you got on the phone, just saying. But I'll talk about that.
Hold your report, that's fine.
We can skip the.
They're so nice to us, Tom.
We can just move to the.
I got you. Okay, I need a motion to approve the appointments as stated.
So moved.
By Beth.
Second.
By Kate, seconded by Kate. So is there any discussion on that? You guys all good with your appointments? Is anybody running for hills? Okay.
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
Liz, aye.
Holly, aye.
Krista, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Tom, aye.
Okay, so that's a 7-0 vote. Okay, and then finally, I need a motion to authorize the board chairman to represent the school board and acknowledge that the superintendent has consulted with all members of the school board in furtherance of the school board's obligations, including those enumerated in RSA 189:1-a, and pursuant to the school board's oversight of federal funds the district will be receiving and of the general assurances, requirements, and definitions for participation in said federal programs.
So moved.
Moved by Beth.
Second.
Seconded by Kate. Is there any comment on this? We do this.
Andy, you are comfortable having this responsibility, authority?
Yes, it exists, this came about, about three years ago, if you remember, Tom, when we consulted.
Oh, I remember this very.
Neither Tom nor I would sign. I believe.
I just wanted to make sure it hasn't backfired on you yet.
No, it just, we fill out the form every year, and then Kelly, Gina, myself, and Bob and Amy comply, and they check it every year at the audit.
Okay, so, Beth?
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
Liz, aye.
Holly, aye.
Krista, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Tom?
Tom, aye.
Okay, so that's 7-0. I believe we're up to.
We need the hiring.
We need the permission to hire. Do you have a motion to, like?
To authorize the superintendent to hire, to accept resignations, and to terminate employment until the September meeting is traditionally what we do.
So moved.
Moved by Beth.
Second.
Seconded by Krista. Is there any conversation? We covered this earlier.
Does he just?
I'm just curious why you're doing it in May instead of June?
We have a couple math and science positions, Tom, that we're right at the finals.
Okay, understood.
Yep.